Okay, good morning, everyone. It is Wednesday, July twenty. And this is the July business meeting for the Hatfield School Committee. Um, the beauty of this is all of our names are posted, so our digital recording. Um, we'll be able to make great. Yay. Um, so there is no, um, no minutes to approve on today's agenda, but we start out with public comment. We have one guest with us. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment today? See none. We will move straight into an abbreviated administrative report. So Dr. Driscoll, the floor is yours.
Sure. So, uh, we have two, uh, parts of our administrative report today, uh, two updates. The first is an enrollment update and the second is a hiring update. Um, so our enrollment data right now, um, we have, have two updates. We have the, um, school choice numbers, so new school choice students for next year. This includes all students who have been accepted and committed to coming to Hatfield Public Schools for next year. Um, currently we are at twenty-seven. That's down three from where we were before. We had a few students who, after they had committed, decided to go elsewhere. So right now for school choice students, new school choice students for next year, we have nine in kindergarten, four in first grade, one in third grade, two in fourth grade, five in fifth grade, three in sixth grade, one in seventh grade and two in eighth grade. Um, so we had a couple other students who were in the upper, upper grades, actually one, one family, um, of multiple students who had decided to go elsewhere. Uh, so we're still continuing to work on that. We have, um, one advertising push going right now. We'll have another one, um, starting shortly at the beginning of August. Uh, that'll be both, uh, radio as well as social media advertisement. We're also looking at advertising in local, um, malls, the Hampshire Mall, the, the Holyoke Mall as well, and some of the things we've seen down there. Um, the other enrollment update is I have today is projected, uh, class numbers for each grade for next year. Um, so in this, this includes the incoming school choice students. Uh, everyone who we, we know of who may be leaving the district for, for any reason, uh, as well as people who have, I, I, I mean, chosen as well as who have moved out, uh, moved, moved elsewhere. Um, so pre-K right now, we have eighteen projected students, kindergarten twenty-five, first grade thirty-three, second grade twenty-three, third grade twenty-one, fourth grade twenty-eight, fifth grade twenty-eight, sixth grade, we have twenty-seven. So at the elementary school, it's a total of two hundred and three projected, um, right now for next year. Uh, at Smith Academy in seventh grade, we have eighteen students. In eighth grade, we have thirty-three students. In ninth grade, we have nine projected students. Tenth grade, we have seventeen, eleventh grade twenty, and twelfth grade nineteen, uh, which is a total project enrollment right now, one hundred and sixteen students. So, um, as I said, we are, we are still pushing for getting more students. Uh, hopefully we, we will, uh, we'd really love to see, um, those numbers go up in the, in the high school, uh, specifically in ninth grade, which right now is very low.
Connor, how do those numbers compare to last year's enrollment numbers?
Uh, the, the, the big discrepancy, the, the big difference is ninth grade right now. Uh, we, we had a fairly small eighth grade class last year, but we had a number of students who opted to go, uh, to evoke schools. Those included, um, you know, a, a relatively small number of Hatfield residents, but a significant number of our school choice students, uh, from last grades eight, from last year's eighth grade, uh, also chose to go, um, to evoke schools as well. Uh, so a number of students, uh, to, uh, book school, Westfield, uh, Greenfield, our, um, sorry, um, um, Franklin County, that's the, those book schools as well.
But overall up or overall down?
Overall, overall down slightly. Really, really though, the, 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 the ninth grade classes is what's kind of bringing that, that total number down. The other, the other grade levels are pretty comparable to last year.
How many students were in ninth grade last year? Do you know?
Um.
Must have been around seventeen.
Yeah, I, I wanna say, I wanna say it was, it was around seventeen. I, I would have to, I, I could go back into the database and check. I have to just switch years to, to go back. I think it was around seventeen.
Um, how many in that class in eighth grade, however, Connor? So that class is already small? Do you know?
You know, if I, I may have an easier way of doing this, but I can, can you give me a second? There, there's a yearbook right outside and I can tell you exactly, exactly.
Of course.
Without switching over the database. So give me just one quick second.
I think I might have that spreadsheet up as well. So I, I know, looking at the historical numbers, and I, I would need to go back and do, to do more work on it to, to give a lot of accuracy. But the impression that it left me with was anytime we had a smaller class, we actually lost. Obviously, when you lose a number of them, you lose, it's a higher percentage because it's a smaller starting base. But the likelihood to lose seemed higher. So big classes seem to hold together. Really small classes had a, a much, um, larger issue of having a lot of Volk students or kids that are leaving for charters or whatnot. And I, I mean, always ninth grade is the biggest hiccup spot.
Yep. Um, so last year's ninth grade, we had eighteen students in it. Uh, next year is projected at seventeen. Um, last year's eighth grade class, uh, had twenty students, uh, twenty students in it and, um, that's where we saw the biggest, the biggest drop for sure.
Looking at our DESI numbers for last year, it shows us down three overall, down ten at the high school and up seven at the elementary school.
Okay.
Down, how many total was that again, A- Adam?
Three.
So, relatively flat, but boy, howdy, that ninth grade class is a, is a hit. Um, do we know how many local residents we, we lost? Um, and I think I'm really particularly interested at the elementary school. Melissa, do you know?
I don't have those numbers, uh, right in front of me now.
The total for the elementary school is fifteen.
Residents.
Oh, I'm sorry, not residents. That was total students. Um, I'd have to double check that.
Okay. So HES lost fifteen total, but has more than made up for that with new choice kids. Okay. Okay, um, committee, any other questions? Okay. And, uh, how about the hiring update?
All right, so hiring update, um, we'll do this in a, in a few different, uh, kind of, um, routes here. We will start with new hires, uh, then we'll go to resignations, vacant, current vacancies that we still have, and then any kind of internal moves or transfers that we have, have, um, requests that we have honored. Uh, so district wide, uh, we have John Salavardos, uh, who's our new director of student services, who, uh, couldn't be here today, uh, but has started on July first. Uh, we, uh, hired Rachel Atero. Uh, she's gonna be our library technician working at both schools. So she's gonna be spending part of the day here at the high school and then part of the day at the elementary school as well, um, to, to work in those libraries. Uh, at Smith Academy, we have hired Blair Shields as an ESP, an education support professional. Uh, and, um, officially now, uh, Gail Pittman as an English teacher. They were with us, uh, this past year as a long-term sub when Jason Duncan moved into the, uh, Dean of Student Support position. Um, and they are, uh, we, we offered them the position after they did a, a nice job for us. Um, at Hatfield Elementary School, we have hired Kim Shippe Hicks as the special education teacher for our younger, younger students. Uh, Beth Saluba, uh, as an ESP, Hannah Corrier as an ESP, and Chloe Morgan as an RBT, uh, slash ESP at the elementary school. Uh, Chloe Morgan wa- uh, also had worked in our kitchen, uh, as, as our, a part of our kitchen staff prior to that, and wanted to become more involved in the schools. We're happy to, happy to support her in that. Um, resignations, we've had a, a few, uh, recently. So Jess, uh, Jessica Callahan, uh, was an ESP here at Smith Academy, um, and has moved out of state. Uh, Anna Carlacki, uh, was an ESP at the elementary school and has moved on. Kristen Plinu was a music teacher at the elementary school, uh, and Sarah Woodard was a reading, uh, reading teacher at the elementary school and they have, have moved, moved on as well. Uh, current vacancies right now, we have one ESP position at Smith Academy, um, based on student need that we are, um, interviewing for this week. So those interviews are scheduled for tomorrow, actually. Uh, we have a, uh, music teacher at Hatfield Elementary School. Um, and, uh, that, um, there are interviews scheduled and, and that have happened for that. Uh, we have a special education teacher for the star program at the elementary school and at the up, and another special education teacher opening at the upper level, um, for the elementary school. Uh, there have been interviews for the, uh, for that, for that upper level, uh, special ed teacher position. Uh, those are completed and, and we're checking references on those. Uh, we also have three, uh, ESP positions. We're still looking to fill at the elementary school. So we're, we're working on that, um, scheduling interviews and, um, we keep, we're, we're keeping promoting, uh, those vacancies as well. Um, in terms of internal movement, um, right now we have, uh, our, uh, Amy Hudson for, has, uh, requested to move from first grade to second grade. Tim Kira, uh, from kindergarten to first grade. Uh, Lisa Swanson from, uh, special education to first grade. And, uh, Jody Brush from preschool to kindergarten. Um, so those are, uh, and, sorry, the, there's one more, um, Leah Gardner, uh, was the full-time band, band director here, uh, and music, music teacher here, and will now be doing, uh, halftime here and halftime at the elementary school.
Did I hear you say two first grade teachers? Tim Kyra and Lori Swanson?
Lisa Swanson.
Lisa Swanson.
Lisa Swanson, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Didn't Megan Wheeler leave us?
Megan Wheeler started to stay the year.
Yeah, she's, uh, yep.
Okay.
So all of our grades are covered. It's just specials and support staff.
Correct. Um, and coaching, we have, uh, if anyone would like to coach our middle school boys soccer team or JV slash middle school boys soccer team, we're still looking for a, a coach as well.
Okay. Can I go back to the, um, enrollment numbers for a question? I'm sorry, it didn't occur to me to ask. Regarding the grade nine, is that group of nine students going to be taught as a group of nine students? Are they gonna be split? Uh, for two sessions of English and two sessions of math and?
They'll be, they'll be primarily one class for all their core subjects. The only time that they may be, um, re- really splitting is for some of their elective classes. So if some students, uh, wanna take an art elective, that might be with other, other grades as well or, or band, uh, where there's, it's, you know, high school band, not just ninth grade. Um, those are, that would be the, the case then. Uh, foreign language too. Um, but oftentimes the, uh, you know, the, the ninth grade class is able to, um, kind of merge with the, um, the eighth grade class too. If the, when the schedule allows.
And if we were to get any more students for that grade, how many more would it need to be that you would split them?
It, it would, it would need to be a pretty significant number more. Um, you know, I, I, it's not, I, I, it's hard to give a, a hard number without looking at, you know, the, the students in the class, the needs in the class, but, um, you know, fif- fifteen is usually, uh, you fifteen or sixteen is usually a pretty good, you know, class size. It's, it allows for, you know, pretty individualized attention as well as, um, a- a- as well as, you know, pretty, pretty great group work and, and good discussions with a, a group of that size. So I would say, you know, that, you know, for, for a single class, that would, you know, eight to, to eight or nine, what we have, you know, that we, that we're projecting up to that number would be good. Um, so we, we, we'd need a pretty significant influx.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Does that grade affect our staffing needs at all?
It, it doesn't specifically this year, no, because we've, we've, uh, created the schedule in, in such a way that allows for, um, teachers to be teaching kind of other electives or, or in other, other places where that one, uh, core class would have been.
Are we losing any electives or any AP courses or anything because there's just not enough kids?
We're not, no. The only, uh, the only class that we, um, aren't running this year, that was an AP, was an AP computer class because we didn't have students that were interested in it.
What's our degree of confidence on being able to fill the, the openings? I, I think particularly in special ed.
The, um, I, I can let Melissa speak to it a little bit. The, um, the, the, the challenge, I think, will be the Star Room. Um, that, that's a, uh, a different certification level that's needed for that, um, for that placement. And so we, um, we are, are looking to fill that. We've, we've posted and reposted and advertised, uh, so we'll keep, we'll keep at that. We've also been in communication with some other, um, other groups, particularly the field center, about how, you know, they might be able to help support, um, if we're, you know, i- if, if we are unable to fill it or if we need to partner with them in, in other ways.
I had a candidate who interview, I interviewed yesterday and I've already started calling references, so fingers crossed that she's interested. And I did forewarn her about our health insurance.
Well, better to start going, right? Committee, is there anything else you wanna ask before we move on? Okay. Um, so we're scheduled to talk about school choice seats specific to the sixth grade, um, Dr. Driscoll.
Sure. So we have, um, uh, a, a particular situation here, which, uh, I've been, been in touch with legal about, uh, uh, in, in terms of policy and changing and seeing if we can avoid this in the future. And it really doesn't look like there's a good or, um, easy way to do it. There should be, but there just isn't. So the situation we're in is we approved, I believe, three spots in sixth grade. It was a, a slightly bigger class. Um, we had uh, three app, uh, two applicants, two or, I, three applicants. Um, so we have approved four spots. I think we, we had four spots, three applicants. We then had a family move out of town, a family with two students in the sixth grade, moved out of town. They would like to stay in Hatfield Public Schools, um, so they would have to apply for school choice. So when they moved out, that dropped our number, our, our enrolled number down to, right? Because there, you know, that number is out, but it didn't automatically open two more slots up for school choice. Um, so I'm right, I'm recommending that we open two more spots up to be able to accommodate those students who are already Hatfield students and have been for a long time to stay in, in district. They've already applied for school choice. Um, so one has been accepted and one is on the waitlist at the moment.
There are no others on the waitlist for that grade, correct?
Nope. No, and it would not change the number of students at all.
Is this something that we can address in our school choice policy? Like, can we create a priority slot for stu- for students who move out to stay?
We, we could do something like that possibly. Um, I'd have to check, I'd have to run that through legal. What I, what I was hoping we could do is just put something in the language that we would approve a certain number of spots or, you know, a number up until the, until the, the cap of whatever the grade level was reached. Um, but, but that, you, they, they can't, when, they, that can't, that won't work apparently.
Don't we have a policy on the books that speaks to students who leave and want to stay in district?
Mid-year. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a mid-year policy. If they move out, say in January or February, then, um, they, you know, they would stay through the end of the year, then, then reapply for school choice at the end of the year. Um, but this, it doesn't, that policy doesn't, it, it doesn't apply to students whose family may move out in the summer months, whose families might move out then.
Okay, and legal said there's no way to give priority. So, I mean, we do give priority to family members, right?
We didn't, we didn't talk about priority when I asked him. There's, that's something I could, could absolutely run, run by, uh, legal for i- i- if we, if we were to do that. Um, what I, what I always think, wanted to do is, uh, find a way that, that they, you know, the number of slots would automatically, more slots would automatically open if people moved out, um, because it wouldn't change the total number at all.
Okay, so I'm gonna recommend that we break this conversation into two parts. Dealing for this very moment with this one particular grade, which is scheduled for, on our agenda, and then we can have more conversation when we get to we're, we, I mean, we have a policy in front of us today to talk about some of this. So, um, is there anyone who would like to make a motion about adding two seats to the school choice count for sixth grade? Kathy's muted, but I see a finger.
Is it two spots or one? Because you said one student was accepted, but the other was not. One is on the waiting list.
But we lost a slot in the process. So we had two kids leave the grade?
Yes. Yeah.
So is the reckon, recommendation to open two spots, Connor?
I would recommend to open to, to, open two spots just to keep the option open, to keep that grade level at the same, um, the same size. Because if we open one spot, um, it still wouldn't change, but it would, it would just potentially drop that number by, by one and cap it. One, one less than we had, um, originally planned for.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve two open slots for the sixth grade for the coming year.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Uh, committee, if you can, um, let's do a quick roll call just to make this super clear. Um, so for those of you that are on mute, here we go. Um, Boudreau, I, anybody that would, just jump in as you.
Inglehart. Iman, I, green. I. Bench, I.
Okay, so that's a five zero. Sorry, next time we'll do a show of hands and I'll just call out what it was for the computer. Remember the digital note taking. That's the, that's the reason for some of this. Okay, so we have two additional slots approved for, for sixth grade. And that solves that for now. Um, next up, I believe there's an interest in having a co-op for field hockey, um, for this coming year, Connor?
Yes, we have two, um, uh, two schools. I'm just gonna pull up my phone because I have a, I believe I have a text from, uh, Jason Duncan here. Yep, we have two schools that we're looking to co-op with this year, um, to try to, uh, make sure we're able to field a robust field hockey team and keep our program going. Um, that's with Hadley Public Schools, um, so, um, with Hopkins Academy as well as with Smith Vocational. Um, so we've, uh, their schools are on board and willing and excited about it. Um, and we're, we're looking forward to it. Uh, it would not impact our students' abilities to play if we, if we said, yes, it wouldn't, like, we would never, we would never, like, cut someone from the team to give, uh, spots to folks who are, um, not from Smith Academy. So, so in case that was a concern.
Transportation for the other two districts is on them?
It is on them. Yep, yep. They are responsible to get the, their players here to practice and to games and to the school before the games and they'll be transported from here.
And they'll all be playing for Smith Academy as Falcons?
They'll all be Falcons, yes.
That must burn Hopkins a little bit.
E- even if they're Eagles, yeah.
And any additional costs from having a larger team is offset by the other district, like uniforms, equipment, stuff like that?
Uh, you know, I'm not, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that works, if they would order more fo- more uniforms or, or not. Um, but I know we have, we have capacity right now with our current, you know, the, the uniforms that we have, that we've ordered. We order for a team and the reality is if we, you know, if we don't have a, a co-op, then we likely will not be able to field a team. Um, and so that's, you know, we have enough, we have enough uniforms for a team that we, we would like to field.
Our athletes pay a fee.
Mm-hmm.
Will these athletes pay the fee to us as well?
Yes, I believe they do.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the field hockey co-op, which would allow both Hadley and Smith Volk to join us in field hockey for this year?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Kathy did a first, Becca did a second. Um, by show of hands, all that approve the field hockey co-op. That's a five oh vote. Go Falcons. So.
Thank you.
Um, so with that, we're gonna turn it over to the policy subcommittee. We have two conversations today. Um, the first on cell phones. Ms. Bench?
Okay, so, uh, the policy, I, I'm sorry, it's a little loud here. Policy subcommittee took feedbacks in the last committee meeting and we did make some revisions, um, to our proposed policy. Um, we also noted at our July eleven subcommittee meeting that none of us had received additional public feedback about the policy. Um, no emails or other communication, um, since our last reading. So the committee has available to them, um, two versions of policy JID, student cell phones and portable electronic devices. Um, one shows edits that we made and one is, um, a clean copy that reflects what it would look like if we put it on it. Uh, Kathy, if you have anything to add?
Not really. Uh, we, we really, I think, did our diligence on this one and tweaked and made it as best as we could for now. Uh, I think we have the understanding that we'll look at this as the year progresses, as we get feedback from teachers and administration, uh, before we think about any adjustments, but as with all policies, anything can be changed.
Connor, what does enforcement of this policy look like for you?
So at the, um, high school level, secondary level, middle high school, um, it will likely look like, um, the, they're called gondor pouches. They're pouches that, um, we, we, we will have, um, students can put their cell phones in at the beginning of the day. Um, they, as they come into building, they, they put them in, they tap them and they secure them. So the, the pouches lock. At the end of the day, they can unlock them, um, to go outside. I've spoken with a number of districts that have implemented, they've, um, They have had a lot of success with them. Um. It sort of takes the takes the enforcement of the policy uh, off of, you know, off the plate of. Of teachers, um, because it's, you know, just the expectation that, you know, students do that. And if they don't do that, then it's, you know, hey, you know, you it's. You know, you know. You know you're supposed to do it, and you and you didn't. It makes it easier, because it's not, um. You know, you don't have, it it's not, you're just not just asking kids to have it in their pocket in a way. You're having having a a physical thing that it's locked into that they, you know, ensures that they can't access it. Um, so it's easier to 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 monitor. So I've 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 heard good things about them, and I think that's that's likely, the direction will be going in. Um, because otherwise, it's, you know, it it's a a a policy that's just kind of left up to each person to enforce at the. Um. At 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 his or her discretion, which I think. Consistency with something like this is the key.
Are we getting those pouches through a grant? I'm sorry, Christy.
Good.
Yes.
So. Great, so. Those against us didn't have to spend any tax dollars, or the, there's a plus. Um.
Yep.
Melissa, what does this look like at the elementary school?
Those pouches were also actually also purchased for grades four through six. Here in the building as well. So the upper floor will also have access to these pouches that we can ask students to put any of their devices in as well. Because historically, what will tend typically tend to happen is that kids will go to their locker, so they can check their phones. So. If we can do that for the upper grades as well, that'd be fantastic. So we do have them for grades four through six. If we need to get more for the younger grades, we can, but at this point, I don't see it. It's not as big of a. Concern for the younger grades at this point, but if it became one, we could potentially get more for the. Younger grades if need be.
How is this getting communicated to? To staff in terms of what's expected for them for enforcement, as well as are we, um, is there a plan to let? Families know about this? I I understand it will be in the handbook as well, but um, this is a bigger change than some things, so is there for that?
Yes, there there is. So it's gonna be communicated out when we make our um. Our handbook changes, we will send a communication out to our families uh, with with those changes highlighted, as well as this new policy. Um, we wanted to make sure that everything was approved first before we did that. Um, you know, just so there were no changes, you know, between. We wanted to do it in the right order. Um, and so now that if, you know, if this policy gets approved, our handbook revisions can reflect it. Um, more clearly, and then those that can be communicated to students and parents.
The policy says that in the handbook, it will. Give further details about confiscation and storage. So. What is the plan there for confiscation? Uh. Is it a staff member that brings it to the office, or? Does some administrator come to the room?
It the depending on what the situation is, uh, it could be either of those. Um, typically, it's in, I would say, because it's. Um. Because it's less disruptive, uh, a quick call to the office, someone could go down and take the phone and bring it back to the office. That way the students in class um, doesn't doesn't miss things. Um, if it becomes more of an issue, then yeah, it might be an office referral, where a student would be required to bring the phone down to the office. Uh, meet with the dean of student support and then um, leave the phone in the office.
They can text all the way there. So I have one edit request, I think, that's small, uh. While we're on this particular subject, so there are paragraph one, two, three, four. The new line, um, it talks about shall be stored, the update said. Um, by school administration in the building's central office. Would we wanna make that instead read by school administration in the school's main office? I just wanna make sure that the policy doesn't require elementary phones to go to Smith Academy.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
That was the intent. It was at each building's central office.
I read, maybe, maybe I come up with a slightly different vernac- vernacular, um. I think of central office as the place where the superintendent sits, so.
I agree. I think it could even say each building's main office.
Or in the school's main office, or something like that. It's a small tweak, but just looking for clarity. Um, and the other one was I had was a question. Um, talking about. For elementary students that they wouldn't be per permitted. It says they wouldn't be permitted to use cell phones while on the bus. Do, are they allowed the other electronic devices on the bus? Because in other parts of the policy, it specifies cell phones versus other devices, so. I I'm. Asking the question of intent there, I think.
Generally, we're not asking any, do you have any electronic devices on the bus? We don't. Food, all of those things are clearly articulated in the handbook as far as bus ex expectations, so. The fact that we've had complaints about kids accessing scary things, uh, videos and such, um, that they were sharing with a neighbor that they were sitting next to. Is part of the reason for wanting to ensure that the kids on the elementary are not using their phones during the ride. But no other electronic devices have ever been allowed on the bus.
Policy team, was that intended to cover other places? I think most places you've spelled out both. That place you didn't spell out both, so I think that was what.
I think for clarity, we could add in. Uh. Cell phones and other electronic devices.
It was just consistent throughout the whole thing that.
Yeah, that that's fun.
I just don't wanna have somebody come back and said, well, I could, my switch didn't get included here, so. For those of us living with the pre-lawyers. Just. All about closing loopholes. I I I gather, I I appreciate knowing that the the Subcommittee didn't hear any additional feedback. Um, any other committee members hearing feedback about this? I think there's been a little buzz. Anything you? Worth sharing today?
I had a random interaction with a rising senior who happened to be at the hospital um, touring for a day. And so I just took a moment to ask her, hey, have you heard that we're discussing a cellphone policy? What are your thoughts? She kind of just indicated not super excited about it. But that was, otherwise, like, from the community at large, I've heard nothing about anybody else.
Administration, are you getting feedback?
Not, not other than we've already had. We did have a meeting with students, um. Who, you know, kind of outlined their concerns and how they would like to have cell phones during specific times and. Um. But but again, many of, many of the concerns that they, um. Many of the concerns that they brought up, I think, speak to some of the reasons that we'd like to like to make this change. Um, because we we wanna encourage it it more, more face-to-face socialization, more personal interactions, more. Um, lively discussions. You know, more um. More volume, in some, in some cases, is is counterintuitive, that might might sound. Um, you know, I think that. You know, I think that's a uh, I think that may have been been lost a little bit recently.
I haven't heard any feedback from families, other than, like I said, any kind of complaints that I've heard via the bus. I haven't included students in conversations around changing or having a policy, but I'm sure once they hear that there is one, I will probably get lots of feedback from students that they're not happy about it. However. For the most part, if they were accessing their phones, it was generally because they were leaving class to use the bathroom and then stop by their locker. Or it was the very end of the day, if they were getting ready to walk out, we'd see a lot of kids with their phones in front of their face, so. Again, it's not been as interruptive here, but I could potentially see it becoming more interrupted, so. I think this is a good policy to have.
I would also um, add and and encourage anyone on the committee who has has not, is we, we have offered a um. Uh, summer reading book to the community, um, to to teachers, as well as community members and to the the committee. Um, the the book is called The Anxious Generation, and it's a really fantastic uh. Sort of a deep dive into some of the effects that um. Smartphones um, in in particular, but also uh, social media have had on youth over the past, you know. Fifteen years or so. Um, and it really takes a look at some of the the data and some of the studies and that have have in in trends that have. Have come about and are are correlated with increased um. Uh, use, and and it goes significantly deeper than that, but it's a, it is a good read. I think it's a worthwhile read. Um. And we have plenty of copies here at the Smith Academy office that I would love to get into people's hands, so please come pick one up if you'd like.
Awesome. Um. Maybe you can make that offer when you put the notice out.
Absolutely.
That might help. And and a reminder of what the phone number is, because maybe people will need to remember that there is an alternative to reaching your student in the day. Um. Is there any additional conversation from the committee about this policy before we put it up for a vote? This is our third reading, and so I think the interest is in. Passing this or not today.
Connor, I have a question about, um, it's not part of this policy, but as far as getting teachers and staff and even administrators. To be, you know, good examples as well. That they are also not checking their cellphone throughout the day. We're not asking this of our students, we're demanding it at this point. We are telling them this is how it's gonna be. It'd be nice if we could, you know. Walk that line as well.
Yeah, the expectation will be, um, you know, professionalism, uh, which includes not, you know, not enough. Being on your phone when you're in front of students and when you're working with students. Yeah.
I think the other thing I have thought about too is just, and the pouches, it sounds like will clear, will help clear this up. But is inconsistent enforcement of the policy, um, because I think what would be a shame is if we pass this policy and then we have. A mix of enforcement, um, which would be a horrible message, so.
Yeah, I I I would agree with that, and I think that that's part of the reason that. Uh, we are looking at the the pouches is is for that specific purposes. Um, you know, right now you have a have the case where, I mean, there is a policy in place that says we, people shouldn't be using cell phones. Um, but it's the 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 challenge is in the consistency. Uh, and by having something that simple, I think it it'll it alleviates that um, that challenge quite significantly.
Any other conversation, guys?
She's ready to make a motion. I am, I'm ready to make the motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to approve policy JID with the two amendments. Uh, that were suggested.
I will second that motion.
Okay, um, all approved, raise, show by raise of hand. Okay, all opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. So this passes with a. Four oh. One abstain.
And um, I'll just let you folks know that I did. Uh, type those edits in as they were discussed, so um. Connor, I'll send over a clean version with the edits.
Right. Thank you very much.
Great. Awesome. Okay, so. Policy continues. Back to school choice. So.
Sorry, I had so many tabs open. I'm off, I'm off mute now. Um, so, yes, the school choice policy, so. Um, back in, I believe, April, we made some sort of short-term amendments to policy JFBB, which is our school choice policy. Um. As a Subcommittee, we would like to make some more. Uh, long-term adjustments to the policy, just to sort of refine our process. Um. Make the policy more clear, put us on a better timeline, honestly, um, for um. Accepting school choice students and moving that forward, so um. The committee has um, in front of them, um, both an edits and a clean copy. We made some significant edits. A lot of it was sort of rearranging, but um, some of it is uh. A change in content, so because of the number of changes, we are recommending this as a first reading. Um, because of our earlier vote today, uh, regarding the sixth grade. I will say that Subcommittee has actually talked about that exact scenario a number of times, and um, Dr. Driscoll has been working with Legal to try and see how we can write our policy. To sort of reflect that scenario where we do have um. A change in the base number of students in a class and how that would be addressed. So, um, Kathy, if you have anything to add, uh, I'm sure the committee would love to hear it, but I'm interested in hearing feedback. Uh, from committee members on what we have drafted.
Okay, so nothing additional. So this is the first, just sort of sharing in general, the expectation first readings. Broad directional, what do we think is the kind of feedback right now? We're seeking.
Yes, exactly.
Adam and Amon in particular?
The rolling admissions. So. As written, as presented here, or there's really no changes, right? So this still presents with accepting rolling admissions throughout the school year.
Right, so our current policy does not have a provision for rolling admissions, so we've kind of. We voted a couple of months ago, you know what I mean? We've done it in a series of committee votes, but the policy wasn't really reflecting rolling admissions, but that's one of the bigger changes.
So I was, I I've been given the impression from, uh, kind of from teachers that. The rolling admissions created a lot of hiccups this year. And. I don't know that I like the idea of continuing rolling admissions. I'm just reading it over again.
And for some reason, I keep not getting access to these documents, so if anybody could give me access, that would be great.
Okay. That's good to know. If you can request access to those, that will help too, because then somebody will have an email. I'm sure you have, um. In the access, so folks, when you set up shared files. For Amon in particular, I have asked the district to remove her old district email, because I think it's confusing. And so it may be that you're granting access to a defunct. Email account.
The old one. I just put these in the folder for this meeting.
Yeah, and that was supposed to be set so that she had us. But if it's linked in that document. That may have the problem, so, um. So Amon, I can see that you're on the policy update sheet. When you go to link, when you go to open those links, are you still having an issue? Yeah, you're not on there. So I just shared. The edited version with you. the edited version with you. So Connor, we probably need, just as a side note, we probably need to do some tech support. I don't think that all of that got quite right. Um Aman, you should have both of those. My apologies.
Can I jump in here again?
Please.
So rolling admissions, the Hatfield Public Schools will allow rolling applications for mid-year school admission every school year based on spots currently available. So that line is, you know, we can apply, we'll take a student in September uh for they can join during the school year at any point during the school year if there's a slot available is what that implies, right?
Well, in in item two, it does say, it does put a little timeframe on it. Um because our intention was to sort of freeze rolling admissions when we're assessing how many we're gonna be taking for the whole school year, does that make sense?
Yep.
Come in between after March or December.
Yep, so like from March after we've accepted everyone at the regular time until December, when we start looking at the the numbers for the next year, like over the summer or in early fall, people would be able to apply through school choice, and then that would freeze and you'd have to do the regular regular thing.
I'm gonna guess we didn't get many kids after March.
No, and and typically we typically we wouldn't.
So this is really about kids that would come in September.
Let me re- can I rephrase that? We didn't get any kids, many kids, you know, after March for the current year, but several for the the next year.
Right, we're just, rolling admissions is only talking about students that are that would come in that school year.
Right, so it's only like the beginning of the fall where we could have someone start in the middle of the school year, really.
Yeah, our last applicant was in February. I mean, the student, the last school choice was February. We had a lot of people coming to in January, but not, it tapered off in February, in February twenty-sixth was our last um school choice applicant.
So in speaking with, I I hadn't, I had emailed Dr. Brenner about this at one point and um asked what she thought about it, and she, you know, recognizing that last year we kind of had a dysfunctional school choice admission, basically, because of, you know, waiting for the override before we could take school choice kids. So we didn't get what we wanted. So that's why we did what we did going into the winter. Um but she appreciates that, like, if you if you get this, with school choice kids, you get what you get. And if you get a, have a kid coming in who has needs, you really have no time to prep if you get a mid-year um applicant. And it seems unfair to the district and to that student to take them in ill-prepared, if they need additional support that we don't yet have, if they need an ESP that we don't have ready to go, if our teachers aren't prepared for them. That's my concern about continuing rolling admissions.
Yeah, I I would, I would, that is, that is a concern and a valid concern too. Um and something that we have seen play out um in, you know, in in real time.
Can we have conditions on students that do require, like if they're in special education or need any extra services that they are, have an application cutoff or?
No.
No, you can't, you can't have any uh any restrictions whatsoever on um who can apply or you know, you can't, you can't make a different set of standards for students who are maybe on I P versus not on I P.
Um, yeah, just considering that takes longer to consider or have services for them.
Yeah.
Yeah. That runs against the the, it's not legal to do that um in the, under the statute of school choice.
Right. I just wanted to mention that it's um sort of outlined in item six at the very end of the policy. That last part of the policy is really in line with just how the statute is written.
So the rolling admissions really is for September, October, and November because we cut off December first. And in those first three months of school, it would seem to be not as disruptive as taking a student in January or February, which this policy is now saying won't happen. So we'll have a freeze for December, January, February, and half of March. And as uh both administrators have said, we don't really get any new students after March fifteenth. So the option also is there for them if they want to accept in March that they join us in the fall. They don't have to join us for the end of the school year.
Well, I think we we have at least one savvy family who didn't want to take that chance of the lottery and came in and became a school choice family at the very end of a year.
They they were planning to, uh but then they, then they were told that they they were, they they did get into the school choice the upcoming years. They they didn't attend on the final day of school this year, no, which was that, which had been their plan to do.
At the point that someone is that savvy and wants to game this, I'm like, game the system, like, come for the last day.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The the only thing I would say to the the rolling admissions piece is that um you know, it did, it did allow us to increase our numbers a bit this year. Uh that being said, there, you I I I think once the school year starts, you know, I um the 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 goal and the hope is that um, you know, August twenty, well, twenty-six, when when staff starts, is that all prep work is ready to go, everything is set. Uh we have things in place that we need. We have have the people in place and the the training setup uh that that they're gonna need. Um and so, you know, it it the things do change. I mean, we could have, we we could have someone move in um that that has uh a fairly heavy I P or or needs, and we we need to to accommodate that. But, you know, to 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 set to set our schools and our teachers and our our teams up for um the most success possible, it, you know, it it may be worthwhile to consider, you know, that we have, we have these school choice openings that we have have made available. Um we we know who we got kind of through the summer, uh and and we've prepared for that. It it may make sense to to say, okay, this is what we prepared for, this is how we prepared for it. Uh and 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 we are gonna, we are gonna cut it off at a certain date um to, you know, to to really focus on stability and implementing those plans that we have prepared for, and then those, you know, the um the you know, ju- just just putting those those things in place that we've already already considered. Uh rather than keeping, you know, keeping the option open more than it already is for um for a a large change to occur, which which could have have ripple effects across a school or a grade level or a district.
Do you guys have the numbers on hand for the number of student school choice applicants that we got based on when they came in? So how many, how many do we get September through November? How many did we get December, January, February, and the first half of March? Just looking at sort of those couple of breaks of time. I know we got new students in, some of them were moved into the district, some of them were choice, so I would really be interested to see when all of that happened, so that we could kind of get a feel for how many students are we really looking at? Based on this last year, which is our one year of rolling admissions data.
Yeah, the this past year, I don't have the, I don't have the numbers written for me. I can read if if my memory serves me correctly, which it it may not be correct, but uh I, we had uh after, so the the previous, the the previous deadline, I believe, was October twentieth, I wanna say.
Which would have been the date.
October first, sorry.
That's when you could get credit for them from D C to get funding.
Oh, correct, okay. So the uh October first, I believe this year we had one student start after that time. Uh but that same student um uh went back to her previous school after um after a short time here. Um so the, you know, the that that didn't really affect us at Smith Academy that way.
I think there were more than that. Haley had a couple join seventh grade mid-year.
Oh, correct, but but those students uh they were residents, I believe. They moved in or chose to come back.
Okay, and the elementary had a number of students come
Correct.
Um mid-year, like December, um even after that, I think.
Melissa, what have you got number-wise?
So uh we started, one of the things, again, because you've been asking and looking for this data, you've been trying to highlight and put the dates of students when they actually arrived, starting um in January. We had um one family move in with two students into Hatfield on January twenty-ninth. I have one student I into kindergarten that I'm not a hundred percent sure on January seventeenth if he was a, that they were a choice student or not. We did have a family move into town, rel- uh they, again, residents, January second. We had a choice student in on February twenty-sixth, um and another family came in. Nope, and that was it. So those are the ones that at least we started tracking as far as like putting down dates, highlighting them on our cla- our big list here um of students who have moved in. So the choice numbers, I wanna say, are, was one. And the students are possibly two, and the rest, other four or five were residents. We did have a big, actually, we did have a big influx of I'm sorry, two more kids, sorry, they weren't highlighted. Um three of them actually came in in January also, right after basically the winter break. So there was a a handful of people that had toured in um November, December. And the families decided that it was a clean break after the Christmas vacation to start school. So we had three different students' choice in from Holyoke that came in. One set of siblings and one other that came in after the fact. So at least five that came in right after January, between that January and February first date.
So so there were five choice and two new residents.
Yes.
Okay, any insight about sort of that October, November window?
No, not that I can, again, start moving forward, we are much, we're gonna make sure that any time a student leaves or enters, we're calling coding them onto our list so that we can answer that specific question and track that over time. We just started doing that this year, starting in January.
Yeah. So district-wide, it sounds like it was sort of pretty even, new residents coming versus adding choice.
At the elementary level, that is correct.
Well, and particularly once we balance out, the Smith Academy was almost all residents. So.
But if I can just take a minute to share what Dr. Brenner had emailed me, this is from back on May sixteenth, if that's okay with everyone. Um she said, this is a balancing act as we are trying to grow enrollment. In a perfect world, we know about next year's students by early August so that we can plan higher if needed. Think about scheduling needs and meet with the previous district and parents. Any students that join from the week before school starts forward, it is a reactive planning model, not proactive, which would also be true for anyone moving into the district, or if they're placed here through D C F into foster care, et cetera. Um she's unsure if there's a model around a delayed start for a school choice acceptance. So, you know, if we could accept them, but give us two weeks, give us four weeks to get our ducks in a row. She's not sure if that is allowable or not. Um but she kind of was cautioning, it's advisable, I read that as it's advisable to have a good amount of leeway and if leeway isn't possible with rolling admissions throughout the school year, then stop the admission process at some point in the summer so we can be well-prepared, so that we're setting up our students for success.
So I think that's really worthwhile feedback. Thank you for sharing that. Um having the prep time, it sounds like there were at least a big chunk of the school choice that came in to the elementary school. If they toured in the fall and they waited till after winter break, they did give us that kind of notice, like they did give us that opportunity um to plan. If in fact they shared, if they had plans, they shared them, et cetera. It, what's the experience administration in terms of if a student's, if a student that's coming to us or coming back to us has needs, are we getting that information in a timely fashion that we can be proactive?
It really depends on the family, and it's not always a guarantee. So we have had students who we have heard might have some um some needs, but it's not articulated until they step through the door that it's like, oh, and by the way, so we have not always been privy to details. That would have been incredibly helpful to have known previously before the student started. That's not always the case when a family chooses their student in. Sometimes there's not any kind of need. They just come on in and everything looks great, but then other times, it's not always the case. So it really depends on the transparency of the family.
Yeah, I I would, there um, you know, they, there is I mean legally, what we what we require is the records request, the records release. Um that gives us the the the, you know, the document to look at, which isn't always um you know, it's not the same as meeting someone, it's not the same as talking through a plan with someone, it's not the same as as um seeing what, you know, wh- what a plan in one district might look like in place in our district. There's a lot that goes into it. Um and and I would, you know, I I would um I would agree with with Dr. Brenner um that that report that that or recommendation that that she had shared that um it can be difficult to plan. And and the only thing I would add to that is because I did, I did ask this is that we can't, if our policy is to accept rolling admissions, um we can't put in any delay that we we would wanna put in. I don't think we could, we certainly couldn't put a, you know, delayed start in specifically for students who had uh had plans. We we absolutely couldn't, you know, couldn't say, oh, you know, because of your your students' I P, we need a month to prepare or need two weeks to prepare before they can start. Um I don't believe we could do that. We, I I don't think we could do that with everyone as a blanket statement. Oh, you've applied, you can start in three weeks. Um it's more likely we could do that than than just for students who might have gotten out of P's, but um we 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 certainly couldn't couldn't make that restriction.
I I don't think anybody would want us to to make any distinctions. Um Becca, before I'll I'll hold it there.
I um, yeah, I just was hoping maybe administration could uh clarify for me and maybe it doesn't matter if we can't do a delay anyway. I know our student services director isn't here, but we can't even have any of those sort of planning meetings or anything like that until a student is actually enrolled in our district. Correct? Like
Yep.
We wouldn't even be able to have that discussion until they have committed and we have accepted them.
No, that's correct, and 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 that would look, that that would be a meeting, that would be a team uh, an I P team meeting typically. Uh which would happen within a, you know, a a week or so after after a student started.
Right, and I think the only sort of thing that the, you know, Massachusetts law says about those team meetings in regards to school choice is what is at the end of our policy, correct?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's essentially a transition meeting that a student, a team would have at the end of one school year before the start of the next school year. Um uh to transition to the next year. Um it just happens you know, immediately and um, no. But I, you know, I would say, say yes, I I think that there, we've we've seen, we've heard that that it, rolling admissions does at times put a strain on on resources, both human resources, financial resources, um it it can, it can do that. Um you know, that was, that was the, and we we recognize that in last year, when we were trying to get our our numbers up, Um, you know, that was, that was the, and we, we recognize that in last year, um, when we were trying to get our, our numbers up. That there, well, there was a trade-off there, and there is a trade-off. And that's something that the committee has to, has to um think about if, you know, if the, you know, wh- what the, what the balance is there.
Um, because most of the new students came in, came into the elementary school. I'm, I'm gonna be specific to Melissa with this, but um. Do we know out of those five new choice families that came in mid-year? How many of them are coming back? And or, or did we lose any of those to next year that we know of?
Them are coming back.
So I, so the reason we did this initially was we knew that if we took them.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Are, are you two referring to the fa- the ones I was just mentioning that came in in January? Those students?
Any, anybody that came in post-October that we, that was part of rolling admissions. So it could have been the sort of one that came in in February as well. It could.
All staying.
Okay. So that was, so the strategy of taking them late was so that we kept them knowing that if they went somewhere else mid-year, they were likely to stay wherever they landed. I, I guess I would be curious to learn from legal if there is the option of, of of a delay of some kind to be built in for rolling admission, not specific to students with, for any student, for every student. Um, that would give the district a little bit of time with records or, you know, if there is some way to have more information before they start. That may not be, I, I'm hearing you Connor, that that's probably not possible, but I guess I just want to make sure that we're asking the question assuming it applies to everyone. Um, and I mean, it would be helpful for any teacher to have a little extra time to build in it to help a student roll in before they got there. That would, no matter what the student was, need was.
Sure.
Um. This is just a thought, just because this is like big picture policy. Um. Would there be an interest or do we see a benefit in basically instead of doing it fully rolling, having like a second start time? Like allowing, being like, you know what? After winter break, this is when you can start if you want to start mid-year. I mean, a lot of families sort of voluntarily chose to do that. Like, is that something that the committee would be interested in exploring?
I have to say in a way that appeals to me more than having that September, October, November window when they're not gonna get a lot of, like, you kind of don't know if it's not gonna, i- if you need a change in that window. Um, having everybody start together also feels like it might have a lot of advantages. And the way that it's structured right now, the time that I would expect to be the most popular is that January start. You would be blocked from that, the way this is structured currently. It would also more likely build in that sort of transition opportunity because they would know there was a, like, here's the day we're all starting back.
That's an interesting idea. And I do, I do think, I, we wanted, it'd all must be like a separate set of of um deadlines. I mean, we wouldn't want to accept rolling applications until December thirty-first if they're gonna start on January second. Um, you know, we could, we could have, you know, deadline, a deadline to start in the fall and then a deadline to start in the winter.
Right, like a winter admissions.
Yeah.
Except that we structured those timelines so that we were out there first. Getting school of choice applicants at the beginning of the year instead of later in the year when other schools are already doing their acceptances. So we have to keep that in mind as well, that we want those admissions for the first of the year to be able to make a determination by February for the fall. So.
I don't think, I don't think that, I wouldn't change the annual piece. I think the question is, how do you run? If you can restructure how you count, because that's what this would change, right? So there's a rolling admission piece of the policy that has its own timeline similar to the annual, but it wouldn't be it's like, if you want to come next year, here's the timeline and process. If you want to sh- if you want to come during the school year, here's the timeline and process. Like, if, if you don't start with us in September, then you could choose to start in January.
Yeah, and I think if we were to go this route, I would not call it rolling admissions. Um, we could wordsmith it in policy, but you know, like op cycle or mid-year, uh, winter admission deadlines or, you know, something else.
Adam, does that start to speak to your cons- the concerns you're raising or is it?
A little bit. I, I don't, I'm, I'm wary just based on the experience of the last school year, but I certainly like that idea better than just kind of continuous rolling admission. Um, it allows families to want, who are considering coming here, that chance to plan. And, you know, if they're having a bad experience at their school system, it might not be so reactionary. Like, I want out and I want out now and I want to start next week. It's you know, we apply in November first or whatever, and then there's this six-week cooling period basically where we get to get our ducks in a row. They get to back out if they decide, you know what? Things are better than we thought. Um, so I certainly like the idea better. I, I don't know if I'm there yet, but definitely an improvement.
I would like to see if we find ways to solve for the problems without just ditching the opportunity to accept kids except for the start of the year, like, it, I'm I'm not adverse to the, like, I, I, I think it's worth solving. Um. And I'm not denying the issues. But I, but I think finding ways of doing it without just blanket stop is ideal.
It might be worth reaching out to teachers. Sorry, Becca, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
It might be worth reaching out to teachers or the teachers' union to find out what their past experiences have been and how they feel would be in appropriate way. So we're on the same page. So we don't feel like we're just handing this to them, that, that, you know, it's a system that's set up that they're comfortable with as well.
Well, I'd also like to see our new student services director weigh in, like that's.
Right, pretty key. Um, so just from like a subcommittee standpoint, I feel like this has been really helpful for a first reading. Um, does, I'm just interested if anyone has any feedback on the first section, are we mostly just concerned at this point at sort of workshopping the mid-year question?
I'm thrilled that the timelines moved up, like all of that first section made a lot of.
We just tried to like sort of clean it up, clarify it, make the lottery easier. Also require people to respond to us within a certain timeframe. So.
And, and I feel like that worked better this year. Like, we did a test run of that and it seems like that worked.
Yeah.
I agree. Move it up, get everything done early. You know, we're, we're in friendly competition with all the other schools in the area for students. Let's get that done early. And if we can work on this for preschool applications as well, uh, that's a different policy I think that needs revision, but same idea, earlier, better.
Uh, yes, all our deadlines had aligned before and I assume that we will align the deadlines.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll do that definitely for preschool.
Connor, when you're checking in with legal, uh, do we think we need to check in about the possibility of like a single mid-year start time or you know, based on the conversations you've had?
Yeah, I will, um, I, I think that I, that's certainly worth, worth asking. Um, and I think that would probably be more, um, I think it would probably be more legal might not be the right word, more, more, more acceptable legally, um, than having just a delay of, of a couple of weeks um, after an applicant, a few weeks after an applicant, you know, and would certainly allow for better planning.
If we have a similar timeline set up for the second admission for January,
Yeah, I would.
we can build that in, that delay that gives everybody the time to prepare.
Yeah, if we're, i- if we're saying a January second start time or you know, maybe, maybe it would make more sense to do, um. Oh, well, that would be different at both schools, you know, start of the second semester, I was thinking at Smith Academy, but you, the elementary school does trimesters. Um, but we could, you know, we could have a date based on that if we, if we would rather do that. Um, but, you know, I would say assuming January second is the start date, maybe like November tenth or fifteenth could be the cutoff. Um, to give that amount of time. Though what we wouldn't be able to do is, you know, say someone um, had applied and had, um, you know, a significant a significant number of services and we would need to hire some folks. In the event that we couldn't hire people, uh, we still wouldn't be able, wouldn't, wouldn't be uh, you know, it wouldn't be a possibility to, to say, oh, sorry, we, you know, we couldn't find someone, so we, we can restrict someone from coming. But it lead, it would at least allow us to plan and have those meetings ahead of time, which would be, would be good.
Becca, on, you, you said if you had any questions about the first section, it's just, to me, there's a little uh, um, lack of clarity. It says by January thirty-first, the school committee will vote on the number of slots available on February fifteenth or the Monday following. There'll be a, a lottery, but it doesn't state what the deadline for application is. And I feel like it would fall somewhere between those two dates.
Yeah, we did, we didn't put one in, right up until the deadline, I guess.
Yeah, typ- typically that, that um, i- it would be, you know, people would be able to apply right up until the lottery. So until the day of, um, and then that becomes the de facto deadline of, of, of when we accept accept applications.
We can, we can clarify that though.
I think that's a smart move. We can, oh, hopefully manifest that we want to have a lot of people all the way right till the till midnight the night before or whatever it needs to be. So this will be back in s- September or?
Yeah. Yeah, whenever, whenever policy comes to the full committee again, we will strive to have a second reading.
Are we having an August meeting?
We are gonna have a second reading in August. I would be happy to put it on as a second read in August because we'd like to be able to get this updated, because till then, we have existing policy which will continue rolling admissions. So, um.
Yeah, the, I mean, the sooner the better with this because I, I know it's, it seems early, given that it's only, it's July, but.
Time is ticking.
December, December first isn't too far away.
Yeah, it really is not. So, um, if the committee is able to meet um, in the next several weeks, that would be great if you guys can keep this one truckin'.
Yeah.
Okay, and if I can find the tab that has my agenda in it, here we go. Oh.
Speaking of meetings.
Speaking of meetings, so, um, Connor and I sat down and looked at some of the things that are coming. Um, I'm gonna look to have a school committee calendar out in the next week or so for you guys to take a look at, um, so that we can have a, a deeper conversation in August. My hope is that you will spend some time thinking about it, um, so that we can finalize it in August and have it ready to go. Um, the interest is in not having a deep dive every month, but probably we'll cut those in half, um, and work with administration so that we're we're finding a really good balance between the information the committee needs to have and the amount of work it takes administration to prep for it. So that we're asking for efficiency as, as best we can on that front. Um, and that those could become more informal. Um, also, we need to do things, you know, if we're talking about sixth graders moving and stuff like that, those conversations need to happen early. Um, so the calendar will take that into account. What I would like, um, to see from you guys while we're all together for a minute, um. Scheduling everyone has been a challenge for the summer. Um, certainly this, I think this worked today. What is the feeling for August? Would you like me to make an attempt to do just another Zoom meeting that would be probably a little bit easier, no matter where folks were? Or would you like me to find an evening in August? Thoughts?
I think we should start with the evening meetings. People expect that of us. Um. Often our July meeting has been a casual meeting, but August is the start of pretty much the school year where we vote on the handbooks and things like that, where folks might have more interest in what we're discussing and voting on. So I think an evening meeting is more accessible to the public than ten o'clock on a Wednesday morning.
I agree if we can make it work. Yeah.
So with that, I'm gonna ask again for folks to send me their absolute no's. So if you will take a look at your month of August and tell me what is out of, out of the question for you. Um, if we're looking for evenings, we probably need to keep it to a more likely we're gonna find Mondays that are open. Um, because at the point we're meeting in the evening, we're back at town hall. We need to be able to book John, which means we can't, Tuesdays will be select board meetings, et cetera. So, um, we can start there. Does that work? So we'll try and get August booked this week so that everybody has it on their schedule. Okay. Any other, um, calendar-related stuff? With that, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor. That's everybody. Thank you all for today. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Particularly.
Take care.